Okay, I'll call this meeting to work. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is our third reading of the proposed Walworth County zoning ordinances. You have to go over this again. Article one is general provisions. Article two is definitions. Article three is district regulations. Article four, district requirements. Article five is general requirements. Article six is administration. You want to go to the regulations?
Sure. Basically, the rules of the meeting are as follows. We will go through each chapter, one chapter at a time, one through six. Anyone wishing to address the commission will have to sign in on the request to address the commission and say what particular zoning issue is to be addressed. So I would assume everyone signed in that wanted to address the commission. The person having or addressing the council will have three minutes to address an issue per issue. Repeating of the same issue already presented will be limited by the chair in order to expedite the hearing and to allow for everyone to be heard. Individuals shall present facts documented if possible when addressing the commission. No rumor, innuendo, or unfounded information will be allowed to be presented. No personal assault, unfounded information, or in professional conduct will be tolerated by the commission. No speaking from the gallery will be acknowledged by the chair. No unruly behavior will be tolerated. And that person will be asked to leave by the chair. And there will be no question and answer portion will be at this particular meeting.
Again, this is run by Robert's Rules of Order, Chapter 17, mass meetings. And if you have a cell phone, I'd like to have you turn them off and be respectful to the people, okay?
And I would assume, before we go through each chapter, I would assume everyone here that signed up to address the commission is with regard to chapter six. Is anyone that was signed up?
Chapter five.
Or chapter five, I'm sorry, not six. So everyone that was signed up is here to address chapter five. Was there anyone here that has signed up that does not want to address chapter five or some other issue that they signed up for? Okay, go ahead.
Who's your first person?
First individual is Tim. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, let me get that.
Yeah, just bring it back so. Okay. Any discussion on Article one, general provisions? Any discussion on Article two, definitions? Any discussion on Article three, district regulations? Any discussion on Article four, district requirements? Any discussion on Article five, general regulations?
I would assume that's where we have our individuals. The first individual is Tim Hollaback.
Thank you again for hosting this meeting. I'm here today once again to talk about the health impacts of wind turbines. I want to start off by saying I reviewed last two meetings and I would be remiss if I didn't say I was kind of shocked at the last meeting by some of the response from county commissioners when it came to information that was presented and we were told it was too late, that you've had weeks and weeks to present information. I think any information that we present is relative. And as I stated at our last meeting, every time you search, you find something new. What I brought today is something about industrial wind turbine infrasound or LFN, low frequency noise. Low frequency noise could be, is the opposite end of the spectrum from high frequency noise. Think of it as a dog whistle. People blow a dog whistle, dogs hear, maybe young children hear, but there's still a sound. Low frequency noise is at the bottom of that level. The handout, I didn't bring one for everybody and I apologize. The handout that I passed out demonstrates how you can separate sounds. You can take sounds out of my voice with a computer and when you can't hear it any longer, there's still low frequency noise. Low frequency noise continues and it gets greater with the greater megahertz of a wind turbine. So that first handle is what that says, and I'm just going to take one excerpt from it. This is from Tom Gray of the American Wind Energy Association, and this is a quote. "Wind turbine noise is as loud as your refrigerator heard from the living room. Shows either a complete lack of understanding of the nature of wind turbine noise or an[381.53][381.63]intentional misrepresentation of the true situation. Wind turbine noise is not comparable to the noise from a refrigerator. Refrigerators do not generate infrasound level sounds of over 90 decibels at one to two hertz. I predicted if they did, no one would tolerate them in their houses." That's just, that's just one of the things. So this low frequency noise, what that does is has a tendency to become greater at night when other sounds are dissipated. This is what causes the sleep deprivation that people are talking about, which leads to this wind turbine syndrome. And I brought all these, again, this is five minutes worth of work on the internet. So I think there's a certain amount of due diligence on everyone's responsibility to make sure we understand these things. The other thing I want to make sure that we're clear about is that this isn't a meeting about wind turbines. It's about setbacks and the need for a proper setback. I'm going to talk about it in the terms of.
Time, oh, sorry about that. Didn't mean to have it on for long. I don't know, I hear you. I apologize.
That's all right. Yep.
It's iPhone, so I have no clue. But I don't need it. Oh, okay. Okay, and then Jerry Hofer is next, and he was going to yield his time to Mr. Hollaback, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So once we get the audio split, wait. Thank you. Oh, that's probably that.
So you have to project your voice.
Actually, or we can just take that microphone. How far will that reach? Do you want to start the building outside? Have a slide, I'm going to save it right over. Better not look anymore. Okay, we'll slide over and put it up here.
Are you okay?
So the next thing I wanted to discuss was about the setbacks. Last, at the last meeting and the first meeting, we talked about CAFOs. And the fact that we've got these varying levels of setbacks, why do we have a setback for CAFOs? Because it has to do with our sensory organs. So your olfactory receptors, they're located in your nose. They indicate that, hey, there's a smell here. We're going to move these CAFOs away from properties so people don't have to have that sensory deprivation. It's the same with wind turbines and low frequency noise. In your ear, you have the cochlea and you have your auditory nerves, which are the receptors that pick up low frequency noise. These are facts. We're protecting sensory organs. Again, it relates to sleep deprivation. The last thing I wanted to talk about, there's been some studies done all across the United States, and every time you look, you find more about it. But in doing research, I just wanted to find out, okay, so what's the effect of industrial wind turbines on wildlife? So I started Googling it, and you know how that everybody says, oh, you can get anything you want on the internet. Well, I ended up with a study in England, and they recorded 3,000 different birds nesting, 23 different species, at wind turbine sites. It didn't show any significant change in their habits, except for one bird, the common pheasant. They found that pheasants preferred not to nest within a mile of wind turbines. I have friends who come here to pheasant hunt on our farm. We pheasant hunt all across the Midwest. They have told me, I'm not going to come out and pheasant hunt if there's wind turbines and the birds aren't going to be there. We're going to find someplace else to hunt. My goal in the future is to build a hunting preserve on our property. I'd like that to still be a viable option. Thank you.
Okay, who do we have next?
Marlo Schaefer.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here at this hearing. I have a little letter that I kind of put together here thinking that it was, I'd like most important. With the upcoming vote on the zoning setback for Walworth County, an important point needs to be heard. First off, the writing of the zoning rules and the desire for the wind farm result in bad timing. First and foremost, the zoning for the business and the ag is at hand. And with that, we are an agricultural county. All we have to offer is ag. Okay? That's not every producer in the county. It's a select few of landowners with ag. All the controversy has centered on the setback for the wind towers. This wind farm would like to place ag on account for their business of generating electricity for years to come. They are not asking for investors or risking our current operations. They want land base and cooperation from the landowners. They will be bonded for the cleanup of the project if it should fail. I am the state of South Dakota. So the real vote will come from the landowners in this project if they accept or they reject the wind farm for the use of their land. A few operators in favor have spoken. Nearly all of those definitely opposing have been heard. The real vote lies with those who have land in the project area, not necessarily at the polls. The site of the towers will be present. The noise they make will be heard when the wind blows and will not be there when it does not. Health issues probably do not come at any greater risk than electricity and moving cars. For the most part, looking at the towers is in the mind of whoever looks at them. Harvesting wind energy is what they do. In harvesting this energy, we will pass taxes to the school and the county and revenue to those who wish to cooperate with the wind farm property. I absolutely feel a better offer will not be made and you will retain your land and your livelihood. Now, for the last while, we've had an unusual string of quiet days. If the wind is not blowing, the noise is not being made. And we've had sufficient votes to get the spraying done of the crops, whatever needs to be done. So a lot of this point about noise pollution, it's the sparsity of the county, it's where they're going, we don't have a lot to offer here. We really do not. Thank you.
Next individual is Christine Zwinski.
Thank you, county commissioners, for this meeting. I'm here to request the county board keep the two-mile setback. I also want to say that I'm not going to talk about the money because that is not what this setback choice is about. Schools and counties always need money, and I'm not debating that. This is about the responsibility to the residents of this county. I've spent hours and hours of research studying articles, studies from both sides of the issues. I've spoken to Campbell County residents, and I've even talked into wind tower insiders. I'm asking the county commissioners to continue to stay conservative for the well-being of this county. I will give you reasons for this and provide you with the hard copies of everything I found. First, I'm going to read an excerpt of an article that explains the problem with sound issues and explains it better than I can. Article is called "Wings of Woe." "Prospective neighbors of wind turbines heard all the promises: quiet as a library, the same decibel level as a refrigerator. More brazen wind developers claimed you will not hear them. Then the 450-foot towers were built and the neighbors learned the truth. Yes, you can hear them. They sound like a jet plane that never lands, or sneakers in a dryer, or there's a whoosh, whoosh, whoosh as a blade passes the tower, causing something called amplitude modulation. Neighbors talk about feeling a deep rhythmic rumble inside their homes. We feel the vibrations over the TV set, they said. That's the low-frequency noise. Some farmers living five miles from the wind turbines say their windows vibrated and the vibrations were visible in the bowl of water on the kitchen counter. Some experience the bare pressure waves that hit their homes, turning the house into a throne, producing inaudible infrasound, like he was talking about before, inside the home at higher levels than outside. Imagine you're sitting at your kitchen table and are seasick, except you are not on a boat and nowhere near the water, says one former neighbor whose family became so sick after living 3,500 feet from the wind turbines that they abandoned their home of 17 years. Infrasound cannot be heard, but it has been scientifically proven by recent studies to be a component of the acoustical profile of wind turbines. The vortexing pressure waves do not dissipate and can go out for miles. This acoustical profile of wind turbines creates a challenge for regulators and the experts that they rely on. The noise produced by wind turbines does not create a problem for the wind industry, though. There are no problems, is their attitude. It's all in their heads, they say. It's the placebo effect at work, they claim, alleging that people's beliefs are making them sick. They heap ridicule on neighbors who are victimized once by the wind turbines themselves, a second time by the industry which refuses to accept responsibility, and a third time by the regulators who have turned a deaf ear to complaints filed since the wind turbine began operating." This article goes on to explain that the state of Vermont's Public Service Board.
We're at time, I would assume Steve you want to. Yep, and Beth?
This article goes on to explain that the state of Vermont Public Service Board is right now working on a setback that is 100 times the height of the wind tower to the property lines or residences. They are listening to the residents of their state and taking a more conservative approach. There are more and more states and counties that are starting to listen to sound experts and read the studies. As an example, Oklahoma passed a Senate Bill 808 to keep wind turbines a mile and a half from hospitals and schools. Why isn't this choice more clear cut? That's a very good question. The reason is because we're in the middle of the process right now. Every study I have read, including the MIT study that I read on your desk, which is referenced in their literature, this is Tradewind's packet, which basically says that the issues that people are having are all in people's heads based on if they like the look of wind towers or not. But even though this article even infers, if you read the whole thing like I do, it infers that there is need for better studies to understand why these people are having problems. Their study actually says, nonetheless, consistent associations have been reported between annoyance, sleep disturbance, and altered quality of life among some people living near wind turbines. It is not possible to properly evaluate the cause or links to these claims in the absence of a thorough medical assessment, proper noise studies, and a valid study approach." Basically, they're saying, nobody's really done a valid study approach for this. And, this article was written in 2014, was funded by the Pro-Wind Canadian Wind Energy Association, and some of this study was based on smaller wind turbines like 0.65 megawatts. Do you realize what they're proposing for our county? I don't even know if there's a limitation on how big they might be, but it's not 0.65 megawatts. It's not 1.7 megawatts like the ones in Campbell County. They're only 1.75. We're looking at two to three megawatts or more, possibly the newest, largest land-based, newest, largest land-based wind turbines to date. How much has been studied on them? Should we let our neighbors that are enticed by the money to decide our health and quality of life? Since the wind tower company in the end will decide where these towers will be placed, and they will. It's not our neighbors that decide that. Our neighbors that do sign on cannot protect us. Our county zoning is the only thing that can protect the residents of Walworth County. We are a conservative and cautious county, and I am proud of that conservatism. When the zoning committee came up with the two-mile setback, they might not have had all the studies, and they might have partially based their decisions based on stories from Campbell County. But now we do have the studies to give us stronger reasons to keep it. I'm not against wind energy, but I agree with the Tradewind's MIT article that suggests more and better studies still need to be done. Let's be conservative, keep our setback, and let other counties be the guinea pigs. There's new technology out there, which I included in your packet, that talk about blazes wind turbines that are virtually silent, that are in the five to 10-year outlook. Let's get educated, read both sides of the issue, and if there's a good reason to rush into a half-mile setback, besides the money, besides the money, I would like to read it. We already have enough information from our neighbors to the north to warrant a more cautious approach. We do not need to be in a hurry. Our wind is not going away anytime soon. I also included an MRI study that talks about how the brain is affected by inaudible sound and audible sound in your packet also. But thank you.
Patrick Shinkley.
Okay, we got the ordinance here. If you want out of it, you go to the clerk and courts and you sign off of it. Get a wind tower in your backyard. If you don't, you get two-mile setbacks. The whole county can have wind turbines all over the place. South, west, loads all over the place here. That's about all I got to say today.
Kate Valentine.
Thanks, commissioners. I just really briefly wanted to address a couple of things. So first, just to reiterate, not just Tradewind, but really sort of any development perspective, I think you've seen the maps, you're aware by now, a two-mile setback is the equivalent of a moratorium on wind development. So just making sure that that's clear. Even with the setback, or I'm sorry, even with the waiver, I think at this point, we know that not enough waivers would ever be signed to actually create a, build a whole project area. And then again, with the half-mile setback, just to reiterate the process, that half-mile represents, call it a compromise or call it, you know, again, look at the 25 different counties in South Dakota that have wind-related setbacks. All of them are less than half of this distance, even a half-mile that we're talking about. Again, there's 14 counties in this state that have a thousand-foot setback. You know, these, these health issues, you know, it's a delicate issue because you can find just about anything, you know, on the internet that you do want to find. All I would just say is that, you know, there's over 50,000 turbines installed in the country, 80,000 megawatts. This industry has been around for a long time. If there were recognizable legitimate medical issues caused by turbines, you can believe that there would be national news coverage about it. And especially a half-mile distance, which again is much more significant than anywhere else. These issues of sound and, you know, shadow flicker wasn't discussed, but all of these things will be significantly mitigated. So that's, that's about it.
And we have Ben's speech.
I'll defer.
Okay. That's everyone who was signed up to address the commission. The next step would be to either make any motions or motion to accept ordinance 2017-01.
We need to go to Chapter six.
Oh, very good, thank you. So we didn't have to have another meeting for today.
Anybody on Chapter six, administration? One thing I would like to read is we received a letter from the town of Java. On behalf of the Board of Trustees for the town of Java, we would like to discourage the construction of the wind turbines within the two miles of the town of Java. The Java Board of Trustees would appreciate you taking concerns of the members of our community into consideration when you curbing setback businesses and have it at a minimum of two miles from city limits. Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the ordinance in 2017-1, the whole unchanged. Can I have a motion to that? Second? Okay. Motion has been made in second to accept the ordinance. And all of us, any discussion? All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Or serve a call, roll call.
Yes.
No.
No.
And yes. Okay. Okay, that's passed. Entertaining a motion to adopt the county zoning map?
I don't.
Carry on the second to accept the adopted county zoning map? Okay. Motion has been made in second to adopt the county zoning map. Any discussion on that? All of the favor?
Aye, yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye, okay. Motion to adopt the zoning map has been approved.
Then actually, I can get you to sign the ordinance and the map at this time, please. The chair and auditor. There's the copies in here. So Gray, on the second one, do you want to just open? So Greg, on the second one, you want to just, both be signed? So you want to just write copy over the big portion that's way down here? And also you would need to entertain a motion to publish the unapproved minutes or to not, not publish, or not approve and have them at the next meeting. I don't know if there's been any discussion on that, so.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the unapproved?
Correct. Or to publish the unapproved?
The unapproved.
Or we can allow it to just happen and approve them at the next commission meeting, which is next Tuesday.
We'll make a motion to wait until our next meeting so it's official minutes.
Second to that?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Roll call again?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that has been approved. Okay, now we'd like to have Eric Singer explain the process after the approval.
Just to talk about the next steps in the process, based on your current motion to wait until the next meeting to publish minutes, I just want to state this is kind of a tentative timeframe for how this will move forward. Some of that depends on the next commission meeting. Do you publish the minutes? You know, timeframes for, do things make the paper? The next step will be at the next meeting, which I believe is next Tuesday. Based on that date and then doing the minutes, we believe that on May 24th, at that time, the minutes of that meeting, the first notice of adoption and the publication of the ordinance will all be able to be published on the 24th of May. The second notice of adoption then will be published on May 31st. And then after that, 20 days later is when the ordinances will become effective, which would be roughly June 21st. So assuming that all those things happen in that order, that would be the effective date of the ordinance around June 21st. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, for adjourn.